Good evening. I'd like to call the November 21st, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. And we will begin with an invocation from Mrs. Kraft.
Thank you. So I'm sharing from Life is Better at the Beach, which is my favorite place. When you're vacationing at the beach, do you wake up and think this is going to be a terrible day? Or I'm dreading all this sunny weather? Or I wish this week would end already? The answer is always a resounding no. Life at the beach is full of hopeful expectation. You begin the day with a cheer, a smile, and a happy heart, for there's so much fun in store. Why can you live in hopeful expectation all the time? Why can you live in a hopeful expectation all the time? Because of God's goodness, His ability to place tiny and big blessings in your day. You can live in expectation because God tells you to hope, to not give in to despair, and to trust in Him. He wouldn't speak these words if He didn't have good things in store for you. Just as you know, you will find treasures on the beach and feel the unexpected cool breeze when the humidity peaks. You can expect with a hopeful heart that God will show you His goodness. It may not be the way you envisioned, and it might not happen right away, but He will always come through, and He will exceed your expectations. Thank you.
Okay. And now we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Banks, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, we'll have our school spotlight. Principal Sherilyn Harry Clark and Central Elementary School. We are happy to hear from you all.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Rose, members of the board, Dr. Lutz. Thank you for the opportunity to spotlight Central Elementary. Our theme this year is every student, every day, a champion. Our mission is Central Elementary is committed to the whole child achieving success through rigorous standards-based instruction. And our vision is to engage, educate, and empower every child, every day, so that they can successfully enroll, enlist, or be employed. This evening, Ms. Bullock, our assistant principal, please come forward. Ms. McCluster, our school counselor, please come forward. And our students, we have four students here, please come forward. Will spotlight why attendance matters, the military small connected group, the lunch bunch, and the bulletin board small group. Ms. McCluster.
Hello stakeholders, and welcome to a spotlight on Central Elementary School. I'm Kelsey McCluster, an ASCA certified school counselor that is proud to serve both Central and Knott's Island Elementary School. Today, I have four of my students that would like to introduce themselves to you.
Hello and welcome to a spotlight on my school, Central Elementary. My name is Madison Burnett. I'm in the third grade. My mom and dad both are in the U.S. Navy.
Hello, my name's Charlie Cash, and this is my bird, Johnny Cash. We go to Central Elementary School when every day. Every student is a champion. Our dad serves the Navy station at NAS Oceana.
Hi, my name is Delilah, and I go to, I'm a, hi, my name is Delilah, and I, wait. Hi, my name is Delilah. Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Delilah Mendoza. I'm a proud fifth grader military student. I'm an Eagle at Central Elementary School. My dad serves in the Navy on the USS Ford.
Last year, when I became an Eagle champion for students at Central, I began a total school counseling department overhaul that was data-driven in nature. My department knows that in order to inspire excellence in every student, you must go wherever the data tells you to go. This is how my department truly closes the gaps and breaks down barriers in the education sector. Our data drove us to some very targeted populations I've been working on. Our attendance data was deconstructed for the previous three school years and led my department to creating a tier one through three attendance monitoring program. Our tier one approach is school-wide. Each class in the school competes throughout the school year to see who can fill up the most attendance apple trees by the end of the school year. The criteria for coloring in one of the 15 apples on the tree is every student in the classroom being on time to school and every student in the classroom present for the school day. Once the class has a full apple tree, the students vote on rewards that they would like to have. The rewards include things like hot chocolate, extra recess, mango time, and trips to prize buckets. At the end of the school year, the class with the most completed apple trees gets a big reward, like last year was throwing applesauce on our SRO and our gym coat. Tier two and three of our attendance monitoring program consist of team meetings, parent meetings, attendance letters, tardy contracts, individual instruction, and parent coaching on the importance of attendance. The program was created based on research. The Portrait of Absenteeism in Early Childhood found that student achievement is significantly impacted when students are chronically absent from school. Furthermore, a longitudinal study conducted by the National Center of Education followed a large group of students kindergarten through 12th grade and found that students that suffer from attendance concerns in elementary school are more likely than any other demographic group to drop out of high school. At Central, we know that attendance is a powerful predictor to our students' outcomes. Last year was our first year implementing the attendance monitoring program, and Central Elementary School saw a 7.22% decrease in chronic absenteeism as compared to the previous school year. Central Elementary School and Knott's Island Elementary Schools are the only two schools in the county that offer a specialized counseling tier-two group to students that are closely connected to the military. Students in this group join together in a safe and caring environment to share and support one another in relation to their unique status of having a close loved one that is active in the military. This group gives them time to connect with their peers that are in similar situations. The school counseling department's population review led to this very specific population. Two million children in the United States live in a household where at least one parent serves in the military. North Carolina ranks fourth largest in military kids, and there are currently about 52,000 school-aged military kids in the state of North Carolina. Carratt County Public Schools currently has 1,312 students that are military-connected. Carratt County has 29% of school-aged students that are connected to the military, and that is the sixth largest in the state of North Carolina. Central Elementary School serves 52 students that are connected to the military. This means that roughly 20% of the students at Central are military kids, making them one of our largest demographic subsets. Students in the military small group were able to identify zero trusted adults at Central that they could talk to about their military lifestyle before beginning this small group. Post-data showed that these same students were able, on average, to identify four trusted adults by name in our school that they could talk to at the conclusion of the military group. The students that participated in the group were also four times more likely to identify effective coping skills to practice if they were sad or scared over their military family member being deployed than students that did not participate in the group. Participants in this group also reported feelings of happiness, comfort, and relaxation after participating in the military support group. New this year to our school counseling program is a lunch bunch small group. The need for this small group was founded through observational data by our leadership team. The students eat lunch with me once a month to practice skills like cooperation, communication, building relationships, and problem solving. Research shows us that elementary students who lack appropriate communication skills that participate in social skills-building small groups are more likely to be able to do things like manage conflict resolutions, show respect when handling disagreements, and thinking before acting by as much as 40% as compared to not participating in a social skills small group. Another tier-two school counseling small group intervention that was added this year is a girls' bulletin board group. This group contains some of our most creative thinkers that gather twice a month to share information that they deem important on the teacher's lounge bulletin board. This small group gives the girls the opportunity to build self-esteem, construct meaningful friendships, and express themselves in a nonjudgmental environment. This creativity program and project-based learning opportunity leads the girls to higher-order cognitive skills and the ability to make real-life world connections between what they are learning in the classroom and what they are seeing in our world. Central Elementary School's counseling department is honored to be spotlighted for the tier-two interventions that are currently occurring through programming and attendance, military kids, social skills groups, and creativity programs. Through a whole-child approach, Central Elementary School inspires excellence in every Eagle. We stand firm in believing every student, every day, a champion. Thank you.
Wow. Great job. I loved hearing about all the tier-two interventions. And first off, I want to thank all of their military families for their service. We certainly appreciate it. But the Lunch Bunch Group and the Bulletin Board Group and the Apple Tree Initiative, they all sound like wonderful things and lots of good things going on at your school. Other comments, Mr. Banks?
I'm just glad to see that we are taking a special interest in our military families, because they could be here, they could be, they could be leaving before the school's out. So it's just, I'm just proud of that part, that not just Central School, but all of our schools are taking that initiative. And I do appreciate all of our veterans and all of our service members.
I also echo that I appreciate your service, and I'm really grateful that we're doing this at Central and Knott's Island, I guess, too. So, yeah.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Ms. Harry Clark and your team. This is extraordinary. Data-driven counseling, thank you. All the principals in the room are like, wow, that counselor's a rock star. So thank you, because it's going to directly relate to our MTSS work. So we cannot get additional interventions for children until we show that they've gone through tier one and tier two, and you are doing that as a counselor, so thank you. Thank you so much. I know Jamie Miller's in the back as E.C., like, thank you, because it's just showing that we're doing the work for kids, and we're going to see the results. Certainly to our military families, we thank you, and we're excited to see, for Carratt County to be the sixth largest in the state of North Carolina, that's amazing. And it shows the change in our community, and that's going to give our schools some additional resources, but it's also going to present need for some, for challenges for kids, because it is difficult. It is difficult when they have those things to worry about. So just thank you. That was phenomenal.
Ms. Peters?
Yes, thank you to all of our service members who are here. And it still echoes in my mind at one of the meetings when the parent stood up there and said that our county was the most welcoming county for military families. So I appreciate what you do and all of our schools do to welcome them. We do have quite a few on Knott's Island, new families we're happy to have. And for all of those great programs, anything to try to boost self-esteem and let all of these kids know how wonderful they truly are. So, thank you.
I like the champion part. Dr. Lutz?
To echo, that is rock star work right there. The principals here all know, I'm like sitting here going, okay, that's that initiative. And Ms. Clark, thank you for the support, because you're only as good as that building principal, supporting that great work. So fabulous, and I'm thankful that our Central families are here and get to hear this. And thank you for bringing your children out tonight. It's okay. You want us to come around?
Are we coming, are we coming around, or wait?
We can stand up, can't we? Yeah, just stand right here.
I may, I may need you to just sort of...
Spread out?
There you go, actually, right where you are.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Are you ready? One, two, three, say cheese. Thank you.
That's that letter.
All right, you're next, board member spotlight.
And I'm going to do each one individually.
Thank you.
I'll just turn it over to you when she gets back in her seat.
You better get home and go to sleep.
Yeah, don't want to be tardy.
You won't get an apple on the tree.
And next, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Lutz.
We're going to take a moment here to recognize our outgoing board members. It is a true privilege to stand before you today to celebrate the outstanding contributions of three board members, Janet Rose, Dewan Craft, and Kelly Peters. This evening, we honor their service on the Board of Education and recognize the impact that you've made on the lives of students, staff, and our community. Start with Ms. Rose, our board chairman. She has served on the Board of Ed from 2016 to 2024 as a lifelong advocate for education. Her dedication to education and service has positively impacted countless students. Ms. Rose graduated from J.P. Knapp High School in 1979. From there, she pursued a degree in elementary education at ECU. Ms. Rose returned to the classroom, this time as a teacher, at Knapp High School. In 2015, after fulfilling a career of 32 years in the classrooms at J.P. Knapp, Central Elementary, Mayock Elementary, and Shawburn Elementary, Ms. Rose retired, leaving behind a legacy of students whose lives were forever changed. Ms. Rose has worked tirelessly alongside other board members to ensure that our schools continue to provide an environment where every student can thrive. She's a staunch advocate for both students and teachers, always fighting for the resources, support, and policies that will ensure the highest standards of education for our children. Ms. Rose, we are fortunate to have you move over to the county commissioners board, and we know that you will bring the same passion, integrity, and commitment to public service that she, that you have lovingly devoted to education. At this time, I invite Ms. Join to come up to the front, and we're going to present you with an appreciation gift on behalf of Carratt County Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. Just one correction, it was Carratt County High School I graduated from. Knapp closed before '79 as a high school, but...
Yes, it did.
I'm not quite that old.
Well, I was 10 when you graduated.
Yes, and he was in my first class, Jason.
I don't want to talk about it.
Outstanding student he was.
I do not, thank you. Oh, wait, I do have two close friends, who I taught with at Shawburn when I retired. Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Taylor. They were outstanding educators. They're not here for me tonight, but they are my friends. And I do have a family member.
I was going to say.
Come on up. That's right.
Both of these ladies were third-grade teachers with me.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Lutz.
Mrs. Dewan Craft, board member Dewan Craft has served on the Board of Education from 2012 through 2024. She also served as board chairman. Ms. Craft's journey into education is very inspiring. After a career that saw her transition through two different paths, she found her true calling as a teacher. In 1987, she began teaching her career here in Carratt, and from the very first day, her passion for teaching and for nurturing young minds was evident. She spent over two decades shaping futures of countless students retiring in 2010, but her love for teaching never truly retired. One of Ms. Craft's most cherished endeavors as a teacher was her role in founding the Mayock Elementary School Authors Club in 2003. She installed in her students a love for literature, knowing that the act of reading expands worlds, sparks imaginations, and shapes futures. Ms. Craft once cited a quote by John Dewey, one of the greatest education philosophers, stating, "Education is life itself." This quote is only fitting to share again at this time because she embodies this philosophy every single day. Thank you, Ms. Craft.
Thank you. Have you heard from Kaylee?
She's sick. She's just going to stay home today.
And lastly, Kelly Williams Peters. Board member Kelly Peters has dedicated over 23 years to local government and public service, and that experience has shaped her exceptional leadership on our board after graduating from CCHS in 1992 and then the University of UNCW. She took on roles in local government focusing on policy governance and the needs of the community. Over the years, her work in local government for both Carratt and Virginia Beach has made Ms. Peters a trusted voice in our community, one that has consistently championed the values of transparency, collaboration, and service to others. When Ms. Peters joined the Board of Ed in 2020, the world was facing unprecedented challenges. The pandemic changed the way that we approached education, but her leadership helped us navigate the uncertainty with clarity and purpose. Ms. Peters quickly became a valuable asset to the board, helping us tackle everything from budget concerns to the shift to remote learning to the long-term strategic planning necessary to ensure that our schools continue to thrive. Thank you, Ms. Peters. Please join me.
Thank you.
Rose, if you would grab your, so I can get a picture one more time. Is it a copy?
Got to get over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, item five, memorial recognition. We're going to hold off on that and move that down to another place on the agenda if the board so moves. So let's move to the approval of the agenda, or do you want to do that before we?
I just was going to add that we need to move the memorial recognition to item E1, where we'll discuss that at that time. And also, we need to add an item four to the consent agenda with an athletic eligibility waiver.
Item four?
Item four, yes, on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So I make a motion that with those changes, that we approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we will have public comment session. Do we have anyone signed up? No one, okay. We'll move on to the budget amendments with Mrs. Susan Mazel, our finance officer.
Good evening, Chairman Rose, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. On this evening's agenda, I have two budget amendments for your approval. First, starting with the state public school fund. This is budget amendment number three for our state funds. We increased by $272,705. We budgeted for allotments received in CTE Modernization and Support Grant, CTE Education Workforce and Innovation Program, principal bonuses, emergency connectivity, and literacy intervention. And then last, we have our other local expenditures. We had an increase here of $68,312.50. We budgeted for Chromebook fees, Carratt Kids donation, and the Albemarle Regional Health Grant.
Any questions about these budget amendments?
The principal bonuses, is that for the principals that achieved growth? Is that what those bonuses are for?
It is, yes.
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Okay. Is there a motion that we approve these budget amendments?
Make a motion? I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have class size waivers, and boy, are there quite a few.
The class size waivers, this is required by state law to present to the board. We, I'm asking for waivers. We're presenting waivers to the state for Griggs Elementary, Jarvisburg, and Mayock Elementary. The, they're for a variety of reasons. Some are due to reduction of positions, due to budget cuts. When we made those decisions not to fill positions, the, we were within the boundaries of the law, but then we added kids or take away kids. You also notice when you look at the, the class sizes piece, we're being asked to add a teacher for one child often. Or in the case of Mayock Elementary, we have multiple classrooms out of compliance. However, that is also due to the fact that we don't want to move a child from a class to one with a smaller class mid-year or into a nine-week period just so that we can be in compliance with the law as kids exit. We don't think that's fair to kids. That's why some of the different pieces. So Mayock, we could have eliminated three classes, but we had kids leave. We are, again, a military community, kids enroll and unenroll, and so some of those classes went over, but we do our best to keep everything balanced and be in compliance as much as possible. But these are not fully funded state mandates. They are only partially funded.
And when I look at these numbers, we're still seeing only... And when I look at these numbers, we're still seeing only twenty and twenty-one and like one class with, or one group with twenty-two. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What are the state mandated sizes for kindergarten?
Twenty-one for kindergarten, nineteen for first grade, twenty for second and third, and those are averages. The actual class size that they want is even lower, and I cannot quote that one because we, we use the district average to meet compliance. Now, this also has an impact on why our schools are crowded, why we had to have more classrooms, and why capacity went down, not up, in buildings. Shawboro and Mayock are both examples of that. Were they at once to house many more students, but when you go down from twenty-three to nineteen and you do your best to meet compliance, we're having to add multiple classrooms per grade level. And to go from what, once we had four classes and now we need six, or we had five and now you need seven.
Excuse me, Dr. Lutz. It also creates the problem of why we're using non-certified teachers, correct? Because we can't find enough.
And exasperating the, the other, so again, these are state mandates that were put into place. I think they started maybe twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, somewhere in that neighborhood. And the number of teachers that are graduating from our public universities continues to dwindle. The northern states were once exporters of teachers. They have the same issue. As our population goes down, we continue to, schools are struggling to find the number of teachers. Elementary was never a difficult area to staff. K-5, we could always find plenty of certified teachers. And once, even, and especially in Currituck, even in September, we could find people, well into July. But the pull of time, the pull of teachers is just not what it once was. And that is a statewide, national issue, exasperated when you have class sizes mandated as well.
Well, teaching is, is, uh, it's just a difficult situation right now. I, my daughter graduated with a young lady who started teaching in August, and she's already submitted her resignation. But on a positive note, I did see a post on Facebook today from one of our teachers. "I am not going to lie, teaching is hard work, but when you are surrounded with great teammates, students, and admin, it makes it all worth it. I love my JES family." Thank goodness, we have so many dedicated people that are able to continue teaching because they do deserve so much more than we're able to give, and we can only hope that the General Assembly will give the pay increase. You know, we didn't get what was expected last year, so I'm hoping this year. Okay, new construction, no, next would be.
The memorial.
The memorial.
Do we have to vote on the?
Oh, we do, yes, I'm sorry.
It's usually been on the consent agenda, but because it's an act.
Okay. Is there a motion that we approve the waivers?
I make a motion that we approve the class size waivers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did we really have a choice? What would have happened if we said?
We always do our best to follow what we're, we are, we're gonna send in our waivers. And we, we, that's what we do. We wait for them.
Say yes.
Respond back and say no, and the more you put on there, the more they don't like it.
Okay. Okay, and now we'll move on to the memorial recognition. Retired Superintendent William Ronnie Capps and Retired Associate Superintendent Julie Douglas. These are two educators, and many of you may know them. Some of you were taught by them, but they spent twenty-five, thirty years working in our school system to help make it amazing. Dr. William Ronnie Capps started at Central as a teacher, and he was very, it was a part of an innovative thing. They became a team teacher, I believe it was fourth grade. He coached eighth-grade girls' basketball. He was the assistant principal at Central for a while, and then became Associate Superintendent under Jeannie Meggs. And later, when Jeannie retired, he became Superintendent. He initiated and oversaw the renovation of what is known as the Teachridge, or some of us call it the White House. He was a part of the leadership that helped our district soar to being recognized at one of the best in the state, top ten, I believe. His wife Lou still lives here in the county. He had two children, Erin and Adrian, and they both graduated from Currituck County High School. And he had four grandchildren, three of which became CCHS graduates. He just gave so much to our school system. We recognized several individuals that had given twenty-five, thirty years and were school board members and superintendents a couple of years ago. And these were two that we also wanted to recognize. Another one was Julie Forbes Douglas. Julie was a graduate of JP NAP. She got married and left the county and followed her husband around. He was in the Air Force, John. They had a son, Jeff. Julie came back home when John retired, and she, in the process of following her husband around, she did earn her college degree and two masters, I believe. She came back as a teacher, language arts. Did she teach you, Mr. Banks?
No.
No, you didn't have her for seventh grade, okay. Well, she was language arts at NAP, and she also taught language arts, I believe, fifth grade at Central. She then became instructional coordinator at the Central office. That was back when our system had one. Of course, that was back when I think we had seven schools instead of ten, and many fewer students than we have today. She then became Associate Superintendent, and she was a leader who led by example. And I'm so glad we have some of those leaders in our system today because they remind me so much of Julie. She always put kids first. I met Julie my very first year of teaching. She taught one room away from me at JP NAP, and she was a mentor to me before we had official mentors in Currituck County. She was an amazing teacher. So with that being said about those two people who are no longer with us, they have both passed away, I would love to make a motion that we remember them in a similar way that we did the others. I'd like to see us put one of their chairs in the lobby area of the Teachridge.
You want a rocking chair?
A rocking chair for Julie and maybe the other chair for Ronnie. So I am making a motion that we put those chairs in there in memory of those two individuals who contributed so much to education in Currituck County.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and next we have a new construction update.
I, I think when you see the, uh, these pictures as they come through, you're gonna really see some significant progress to the construction site. You're gonna see the second floor with the concrete in. You're gonna see increased trusses and the building's really starting to take shape. I visited the school today, a lot of mud, and I just had my car washed, so I was just like trying not to. That hadn't happened in a while, so I was very excited about that. And so, uh, the, the construction site is, again, it's hard to get in and out of because there's so much activity. So look at the number of vehicles on site. Again, they're projected to hit on time. Opening is October of twenty twenty-five. Again, I would love if we got here sooner than that, but right now, that is the projected, and they are on time. We do not have any severe weather this fall, and you can see everything's beginning to take shape. I think it's a well-thought-out school. Again, we, we love the design-build process that, that is taking place. That is, uh, we avoid the low-bid work. You bid, this work goes out, and you can expect top-quality work going into it. It's definitely, having been part of different building projects before on a much smaller scale, I must say that this is by far, we did the additions at Mayock Elementary, the additions at Mayock Miller, Mayock Middle School, and then we're seeing the same quality work at Tallis Creek.
It's looking very nice and only eleven months away from opening, hopefully, so that's great.
We're gonna be talking about that here at the board meetings in the near future.
Okay, and next we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I made a motion we approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we will have student board member report. Amelia.
Yes, ma'am. For Central Elementary School, November at CES has truly been a month filled with gratitude and appreciation. The spirit of Thanksgiving has permeated through our events and activities. Earlier this month, our students paid tribute to servicemen and women who have served our country. During our Veterans Day program, students expressed their gratitude through heartfelt songs and poems. Our commitment to student success continues with ongoing parent conferences. These meetings provide a valuable opportunity for parents and teachers to, uh, discuss student progress, address any concerns, and set goals for future improvement. At Currituck County High School, our after-school tutoring program is thriving. We continue to see great numbers from our tutoring sessions. We're getting great feedback from both students and teachers. Our band students performed wonderfully in their annual fall concert. We're tremendously proud of our band students. Our CTE department held their course club fair during lunches. This gave students an opportunity to gain insight on potential course selections from our CTE department. CCHS held our first annual Uniting for Achievement Dinner. We are thankful for the parents and students who attended the event. Athletically, our football team advanced to the second round of state playoffs. They will take on Southern Durham this Friday. Go Knights. For Currituck County Middle School, November has been a month of reflection, celebration, and preparation as we approach the end of the year. It has been filled with important events, opportunities for student involvement, and support from the school community. Student leaders have been busy. They celebrated National Kindness Day and spread positive messages to staff and fellow students. Our FBLA club helped clean up trash around school grounds, and the Student Leadership Club is hosting a Thanksgiving food drive for the blessing boxes of Currituck. We are still accepting donations of non-perishable goods through Monday. We wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday filled with love and gratitude. At Griggs, November's off to a fantastic start. We just finished our first quarter and celebrated our impressive attendance, hitting an average of ninety-three percent. Miss Yer's class took the top spot in our attendance competition with a stellar ninety-eight percent. We also recognized sixty-two students who made it to school every day this quarter. This week, our GES staff is enjoying an underground spirit week, and the students are having a blast guessing the daily theme. As we close out the month, we're giving our teachers some extra planning time to ensure they can provide the best focused instruction for our students before December, uh, the December holiday break. At JP NAP, the last week of October, their Spirit Week was hosted by the Student Government Organization, culminating in a pep rally to boost morale and unity within the school community. Students and staff celebrated school spirit throughout the week with various activities and events. The pep rally featured games, a pie-eating contest, and other activities. The Future Business Leaders of America organized and held the Monster Mash Dance with a great success and enjoyed by all who attended. The dance was fun and engaging event that brought the school community together for a memorable evening of music, dancing, and socializing. Jarvisburg Elementary School began with a celebration of our new school psychologist. We also participated in Spread the Word Inclusion Week as part of our commitment to being a unified champion school. We are looking forward to our Community Color Run this weekend with CES and GES as Central Elementary School on Sunday, on Saturday. Come join the fun. Participants can register on the day of the event. At Knott's Island, we have had a spectacular start to our fall here at, uh, at Knott's Island, as we have had plenty to celebrate. Avery W., Adeline C., and Haley E. earned our October Student of the Month awards for the Character Trait Responsibility. Our very own Ms. Haskell and Ms. Pastniak presented about how SEP really fit with the ITSE standards and our state digital learning competencies at the NC Science Teachers Association Convention. In addition, Ms. Pastniak was awarded the Region One Elementary Science Teacher of the Year out of seventy-three candidates. Finally, Mr. Goins recognized his standout staff members with the KIES Wings of Dedication Award, and he was proud to recognize SRO Deputy Capps for his dedication to the students, staff members, and families at KIES. Deputy Capps has built a very trusting relationship with our school community as he goes above and beyond to foster a positive school culture. At Mayock Elementary School, we are pleased to have completed our first data and dinner in which instructional staff remained following dismissal to share in dinner and complete a deep dive into student data. This information is being utilized to drive instruction, reteaching, and walk to learn to best support student needs. We are looking forward to our upcoming Penguin Patch. Please join us on Saturday, December fourteenth, to listen to our Panthers sing, complete some Christmas shopping with our PTO, and see Santa. At Mayock Middle School, uh, Mayock Middle School is proud to share the news that results from the twenty-three, twenty-four end-of-grade testing resulted in MMS being ranked in the top five percent in the state. A celebration is scheduled for Monday to recognize the accomplishment and use the momentum to drive our school toward further growth. Mayock Middle School is also excited to welcome our newest family member, the Bulldog mascot. Voting to name the Bulldog in underway and the winning name will be announced in the opening ceremony of EOG Celebration on Monday. At Shawboro, our fifth-grade students had a wonderful experience partnering with the high school CTE department for a hands-on experience of building birdhouses under the guidance of high school students. This is a fantastic way for our younger students to learn about construction careers while working alongside their older peers. Shawboro's Child Nutrition Department hosted Friendsgiving this week and served over five-hundred-and-forty hot meals to students. Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Great job, Amelia, and I love that visual that went along with that. Very nice.
That was great.
Okay. Information items. The next Board of Education meeting will be December nineteenth, four o'clock work session at the PLC NAP, and then here, six-thirty, board meeting. Board member comments. Would you like to start, Ms. Peters?
Sure, just, um, thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. As, uh, as a Currituck County graduate, I've always had great pride and, of course, supported our schools and our community. Um, and now as a parent, I will continue to do so. Thank you to Dr. Lutz and your cabinet, who, as any of us who know you, know you all work endless hours, and you all are all heroes. To all of the staff and principals, you all are amazing, and thank you for all you do, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Parker?
Just first of all, thanks to all the administration and staff that are here tonight. Again, um, there's not too many jobs where people come out on their free time to come out and support. So again, we thank you for giving up yet another evening to be here with us and to support Currituck County schools. Certainly, congratulations to Ms. Reynolds, and thank you to her team for working to get that MMS school data out, that we know that MMS is in the top hundred in the state, and we are certainly excited about that. And we look forward to the other schools digging into their data as well. I was lucky enough to go to Mr. Edwards' Uniting for Achievement Night at Currituck County High School. It was an extremely important event. I was really excited to see that academic focus again. He and his administrators and a few teachers giving up their Tuesday night, to be there with parents to explain the process of how we get letter grades for schools, which I think is super valuable information because people often see B, C, D, and they're not sure of how those equations are calculated. I learned quite a bit. Um, the high school has consistently been a C. Part of that, I won't go on my tie rate, but part of that is because of math one at the middle school, and we gut the high school of all those math proficiencies, and then they're starting behind. The thing that I learned was the twenty percent that's based on growth, biology is not included in that. For some reason, the state has decided to throw that out. Well, anyone that's had a student at Currituck High School knows that, um, Mr. Andrikovich, Thomas Andrikovich teaches biology, and he's a rock star. So if we wanted an area to be counted, we would want biology to be counted. So there was just some really good information. I encourage parents. I know it's difficult. I know especially oftentimes when we have high schoolers, we have younger ones following behind. I know it's difficult to get out to nighttime events. I know it's difficult to get out to nighttime events, but I just challenge you as a parent. We often flood our children K-5, and then we back off, and we actually should be doing the opposite. We have a huge village K-5 of people who will carpool, do whatever, go to the carnival, but we really need to be intent on 612 and what we do for our kids. The high school was really trying to reach out, and we did not have a good parental showing. I told Mr. Edwards, "Don't. You stand tall and be proud that you did it, and you know that the information you presented was outstanding, and the parents that were there got great information." But just a challenge to our high school parents, we have to engage. It's not enough to sit and complain. You have to be able to engage. And again, thank you to all the administrators, and then I am going to embarrass Ms. Greta Nelson, who I didn't know was going to be here tonight, but in a few weeks, Ms. Nelson will officially be Dr. Greta Nelson. Ms. Nelson has completed her doctorate from the University of Southern California. For those of you who don't know, that is one of the most prestigious doctoral programs in the country for education. It is extremely rigorous, and it is extremely challenging. She has devoted years to that. She has flown to California to be part of cohorts to do that work, and I am just so excited of what she's going to be able to bring and add back to our county by being able to interact with other educators from across the country. So thank you, Ms. Nelson. That work does not go unnoticed, and thank you for being a lifelong learner. And just to everyone, happy Thanksgiving. Certainly a shout out to our food service crew who went above and beyond serving our students. So thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just a couple of things to Ms. Peters and Ms. Kraft. Your service to Currituck County is very much appreciative. These positions that we hold, it's not about the power, it's not about anything else. It's what we can give back to the community, and y'all's hearts were really for the kids of Currituck County. I just wanted also to acknowledge that I did go to the Special Olympics, and I know Dr. Lutz always says that just fills his bucket to watch those kids participate in that, but that's not what filled my bucket while I was out there. Our staff, just the love and the compassion that our staff had for those kids was just, was extraordinary and was just amazing to watch, and my hat's off to y'all for that. And Ms. Rose, also, you're going to be missed, but you're going to be busy. That's all I'm going to say. You're going to be busy.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Okay, Ms. Kraft?
Yes, first of all, I want to apologize. I should have acknowledged Sue Green Overton, who was a bookkeeper at Moyack Middle School. She passed away on Monday, November the 11th. Sue Green Overton, 67, passed away. She was cared for in her final moments by family at home in Camden, North Carolina. And I know personally that she had cancer, and she struggled definitely at the last. So I just want her family to know that they're in our prayers. I did get to all of our schools this month. I attended several fall festivals, two title one reading nights, a couple of sports games, and a pep rally. But most of all tonight, I'd like to thank the many people, teacher students, former students, principals, friends, the list goes on, who have reached out to me in the past weeks thanking me for my service on the school board. God blessed me with the opportunity to teach at Moyack Elementary School for over 20 years, and then to serve on the school board. I'm proud of the accomplishments that we made. We've done lots of good things, and I know that you're all going to continue to keep that forward progress going. The things I did were never about me, but a way to give back to the county. It was a get-to, not a have-to. Please know that I will always be your biggest cheerleader, and I leave you with this. In a world where you can be anything, always choose to be kind because it's going to come back to you. It might not be from the person you were kind to, but it'll come back to you in great ways. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Dr. Lutz?
Thank you to Currituck Education Foundation, who gave out several grants to our teachers this past week. Our teachers are very appreciative of their recognition. Also, I want to touch back on Avery County. We had a wonderful drive for Avery County. A lot of people in this room helped fill the book bags and the sacks, and ultimately, Anita Rabin, I believe Theresa Brinkley drove across the state to deliver those goods to Avery County this past weekend or the weekend before. Avery County was very appreciative of what we did, and we did amazing work across our school district in supporting Avery County. I'm going to do one more. Ms. Rabin in Central, I put it in my, that is great work. We need to do more of that. That is a Tier Two, that is a heavy lift intervention, and she's tracking the data. So I don't know if Ms. Arrington's here, but put that on that, yep, you know what's coming next. All right. All right, and let's, you know, in time to give thanks, make sure that those people, those people in our lives that we appreciate may not be here. Give thanks one last time when you see people. Thank you for your service, Ms. Kraft, Ms. Rose, and Ms. Peters, and everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lutz. I too would like to thank you all for coming out, and I did not know that Ms. Rabin and Ms. Brinkley took all of that to Avery County on a weekend, no doubt. So we certainly want to thank them, and we appreciate what they did because that county has really suffered and needed what we did. And congratulations to Mrs. Pasniak, Region One Science Teacher from Knott's Island Elementary. What an honor. I didn't know about that either. I too attended Special Olympics, and Ms. Jamie Miller, outstanding job, and I can see it in your face when we're there, how much you love what you do, and thank you for all you do. You are an outstanding director. Veterans Day, Shawboro Elementary, amazing program. I thoroughly enjoyed that. Thank you for inviting us. Thanksgiving feast, we fed all the children, and I am anxious to know how many.
It was 47% of our students and 72% of our staff.
That's great. It looked delicious. I want to, oh, also, congratulations to Moyack Middle School, top 5% in the state. That is amazing. I'd like to commend you, Dr. Lutz, and your staff for all your hard work and ensuring that we got on the right track. When you called and told me about the progress we had made this year, being number 12 out of 115 districts, you immediately said, "There's some areas we need to improve upon, but we're already looking at it." And I want to thank you for that. Always putting our kids first. Serving on the board has been a real privilege and an honor for me. I've always been proud of this school system. It's been a part of who I am since I was six years old because I went to school here all my years, and I left for four to go to college, but my mother was a teacher assistant at Knott's Island. I still felt connected. I taught for 32 years, retired in 2015, and then was appointed to the board in 2016. And I'm still, I'm always going to have a special place in my heart for the Currituck County school system. I want to get back to being a reading buddy. I haven't done that this year, and I still want to visit and follow all of you on Facebook and the wonderful things you and your schools are doing. So thank you to all of you. And with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.